Oh, I got the last one about you tried and nothing. Yeah, no, I got you. I didn't know, I understood what you said.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Diveterio?
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Andrews?
Present.
Councilman Wells? Councilman Leon?
Public hearing item, old business number one.
In ordinance to extend and modify the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plots, site development plans, or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the city of Hammond for an additional one hundred and eighty days, Councilman Diveterio.
Um, as we're back here again, uh, it's, it's on the, we've been discussing it for several months, so we're just here again trying to get it, um, passed again and then extended. And it was vetoed and we changed some, we went back to the original one. And, uh, here it is. Uh, anyone from the public have any comments on it? You come up to the mic.
Good evening. I'm Deborah Swinson. I live at twelve Ravenwood Street, uh, in Hammond in Woodbridge subdivision. I'm just here, I'm actually the at-large member for the HOA, and I'm here just to ask uh, for the extension of the moratorium, um, considering the drainage issues and things that we are faced with constantly. And I do want to say that it's not like we're not doing anything. I started the rabbit trail today to find out about this I-12 culvert justification that everyone keeps telling us. So I'm on that rabbit trail to try to see about who can widen the culverts. Or I spoke with Kylie Bates and he said that, um, we need to ask them to examine the structures for today, the present land use and the future land use. And maybe they will listen for that, for the Department of Transportation. But I didn't mean to get off topic, but I just want to let y'all know that we are trying to, you know, push forward and find reasons, you know, things to help the drainage too, besides asking y'all for help. But I represent the subdivision and we would like for y'all to extend the moratorium.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Paul Forbes. I live at one seven zero seven two Octavia Street. And, um, I think my comments are a little bit more general about, uh, really in opposition to, um, multifamily housing and developing that, bringing those into the area, based on what I've read and seen in the news. And I'd just like for you to consider some things about the quality of life to uphold and improve the character of existing neighborhoods. And one of the things to look at is developing, uh, incentives to preserve and improve our historic neighborhoods and preserve existing green space. Um, also, uh, it's about focusing on planning on, if you are looking at building housing, to look at focusing on small defined neighborhoods of family, of single-family homes. And homeowners are clearly more invested, uh, in the community and quality of life issues when they are, uh, when they own owning property. Um, also, uh, there are already several large multifamily projects that are now being built and coming online soon on the periphery of the city. So I don't understand why there would need to be a, um, trying to bring those into the city when you already have these outside and then you don't have the burden, the operational costs and other burdens that go along with those. Um, and some examples, the city right there on Minnesota Avenue, uh, they've got the apartment complex that's coming online soon. Uh, Minnesota at Range, you have the, um, uh, multifamily houses, uh, that have just opened up. And then at Hoover, L.A. twenty-two, I mean, that's a very large project. And those are just some examples of what's going on. So I don't understand why there should be a pressing need to do that in, within the city limits. Which leads me to the next point, as, uh, this lady pointed out, flooding. Um, I happen to be a member of our neighborhood HOA. I'm not here in an official capacity for it, but I've spoken to a number of neighbors and flooding is what everyone is concerned about. And the multifamily housing projects, they're going to have a disproportionate negative impact to create flooding. Anytime, if you build a, a house on a quarter acre of land, that's going to certainly remove a certain amount of reservoir for the rainwater to go. You put in a large multifamily and then you've got paved parking lots and everything. So naturally, that displacement alone is going to create flooding issues. And we all know that, you know, these developers, they will get engineers to come in and develop flood plans. Well, um, we all know that those, every time you taking out reservoir for where that water's going to go, there's a tipping point at some point. That water's going to go somewhere. And we could, we've all seen examples of that right here in, uh, Tangs Maho, Saint Tammany, Saint Charles Parish, where flooding never existed before, but as development took place, that tipping point was reached. And we all know the developers and those engineers are nowhere to be found when your house is flooding. And we already have flooding issues right here within the city. Look over here at, um, on, um, um, Kate Street and Thomas. Every time you get a heavy rain, you've got flooding issues right there. And that's just an example. Um, the other thing too is if you're looking at it in terms of generating, uh, tax revenue for the city, Hammond is increasingly, uh, the center for retail and professional services. And I would say to focus on making the city business-friendly. For example, business-related afterlorm and sales taxes were, are going to generate far more revenue for the city than, um, uh, either homes or the multifamily, uh, properties. And there are any number of other points that could be made, uh, but the ones I've listed are surely important. And I do want to thank you for your attention and efforts to protect our community.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Forbes, for coming, uh, and appreciate you, the letter you sent out. And, um, got to meet you and great points you made. I'm, I'm glad you shared all that with us and, and, um, yeah, thank you.
Oh, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? All right.
Number two?
In ordinance to approve a request by John Montesino Senior to revoke the right-of-way of Bronner Street, which was never constructed by the city of Hammond, according to a survey by Max Bodine, Inc., dated eight five twenty-three, Lacy Landrum.
So as we discussed in introduction, I know that's been a minute. Um, this was first heard in public hearing on September fourteenth. Um, it came to the city council on October tenth for, um, introduction and then is now being heard tonight, um, for possible final approval and public hearing. Um, this is a unique circumstance because we're asking for the right-of-way or the, what would have been Bronner, um, as a road to be undedicated, um, to be revoked. And the reason being is when this original lot was, and roadway was, um, put into the plan, it was, um, assumed that Bronner would then service four lots off of it. What has since happened is that the Montesinos have purchased all of those lots, including another lot over on Rebecca, and made kind of a backwards L-shaped lot. They have since built their house on that lot. And so, um, we are no longer in need of this right-of-way. Um, there is no other property to be serviced in this way. Um, and there's no expectation, given the way that the house is laid out and everything about it, that the lots would be subdivided and then need to be further serviced by Bronner. So, um, if they actually subdivided, they might subdivide off back the lot, but it would face towards Rebecca and be accessed that way. Um, so included in your packet is the map showing the right-of-way, um, the views of the street and everything. There's also an agreement between, um, Mr. Montesino and his neighbor about how the property will go back, um, to their ownership.
Is there anyone here for this item?
Will this stay R, it will go R M two, I guess, because everything else is around it, like the zoning is just whatever everything else is?
Right. It actually becomes part of their parcels. So, um, there's a survey in here as well, um, along with the ownership agreement, uh, because basically, if I'm correct, the neighbor is saying, hey, I don't have a need for this due to some canal structures and other things that are on that, that part of the right-of-way. And he's actually going to say, Mr. Montesino, why don't you have it all?
Okay.
He is here tonight in case you have any other questions.
All right, thank you, Dr. Landrum. Public hearing new business, number one.
In ordinance to approve a request by Gloria Boyd to allow for a mobile home located at seven zero seven Washington Drive in District Four, zoned RS dash three, Z dash two zero two three dash zero three dash zero zero one two zero, with the following conditions: This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. Two, it meets all the requirements of the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three dash four. And three, the damaged mobile home currently on the property must be removed before a mobile home permit can be issued. Lacy Landrum?
This is also somewhat of a unique situation. Um, we spoke about this before. This went before the Planning and Zoning Council, uh, Commission, rather, on October twelfth. It was introduced into the city council meeting on the twenty-fourth, and then we're here tonight for the public hearing and for possible final adoption. Um, both to the north and the south of this, um, and to the east are, um, both single-family homes and, um, our proposed mobile home areas. So this is one of those kind of gray areas where we're before you because we have not authorized automatic mobile home placement at this location. There is an existing mobile home there. It was damaged. Ms. Boyd is trying to apply and seek, um, a new mobile home through the Restore State Program. And so this is, uh, a step in that direction to help her application be more successful for possibly receiving a new mobile home. Um, she is not a hundred percent sure if she'll get that, so we're not a hundred percent sure if we'll have final, um, placement of that mobile home, but this is, um, in process of that.
Now, Dr. Landrum, a quick question on that with your last statement. Not a hundred percent sure, but if we move in the process of helping her to go forward with that, that would be a plus in her favor, right?
That's correct, and it would allow for the damaged mobile home to come off of the property and the new mobile home to be installed.
Okay, thank you.
You know, I think we talked about this before, but the whole proposed mobile home area, I don't really like. I don't even had many discussions on it. It's not a, it's not zoned mobile home right now. It's, it's proposed. And therefore, we've talked about this whole, this whole imaginary proposed, like it's not approved and I voted on. I mean, I, I don't even really like using that term when we're describing that to, to the public because it seems like, you know, we're talking about changing that or proposing it. Nobody, nobody since I've been here has proposed in that. So I just like, want to make that clear that nobody's proposing expanding the mobile home usage. Because you're referring to a map that's never been even voted on, I guess, that was presented at some point in time, waiting for a time. I just, it's a confusing term to use when, when we keep, when it's keep being brought up over and over and over. So, um, so yeah, I just want to, want to make that clear on, on that proposed term. Um, and, uh, is she here tonight?
Yes, and also has family supporting her tonight.
Okay.
Um, there are photos of the site and the surrounding properties, along with, um, the aerial and the maps inside too.
Is there anyone else here on this particular item? All right. New business, uh, public hearing number two.
In ordinance proposing an election to determine the amendment to the city of Hammond Home Rule Charter, Charter, providing for an elected Chief of Police and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Councilman Wells?
Good evening. Thank you. Uh, we've been talking about this here for quite a while. And Andre, could you help me explain this here?
Yes, Councilman. So in general, this is, uh, an ordinance that would present the question of whether the Hammond Police Chief should be elected to a vote of the people because it, it's a change of the charter. The charter provides for a chief who's appointed by the mayor. This would change that to a person who's elected. And since it's a change to the charter, that itself requires an election. So this council would then set forth what would be the, uh, terms of that police chief and how that would operate. And that's been circulated, uh, previously. It's been introduced. And there were a couple of comments, uh, that I've received with respect to the ordinance that was introduced.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any comments on it?
Let me just say for the benefit of the public that the, uh, two questions, comments I received were, number one, should the, uh, chief, if elected, should he have a, uh, two consecutive term or three-term limit? That was, that was something that, uh, was raised. Whatever that is, it just ought to be clear in the language, whether we were limiting the chief to a two, two-four-year terms or three-four-year terms. And then in terms of, uh, residency requirements. So our department heads now are allowed to live in the city or within a radius of the city. If you intend the chief to live in the city and continuously in the city during the term, that language should just be clarified as well. The other question that was raised was, it was a comment at one of the meetings about, well, if this passes, does the, uh, is the chief required to bring any contract over twenty-five thousand dollars to the council for approval? And if, if you were to consider the police department as a department of the city, then that would come under the ordinance that says all contracts of twenty-five thousand should come to the council. My advice is we be clear, so that it's not subject to any possible interpretation in the future. If you want contracts over twenty-five thousand dollars to come to the council, let's put that in this, in this ordinance. So those were the, those were the items that were, that were brought up since the introduction.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to you. Um, my, uh, uh, position on this is that I would like for the police chief to remain an appointed position. And I'm saying that for a number of reasons. Uh, my career primarily has been in higher education. And I have worked very closely with the police departments in New Orleans, Saint Charles, Jefferson Parish, on down the line. Um, and one of the things that comes up is the making certain that you have professionally qualified people. And I've had, I had many conversations with folks at the, uh, New Orleans Police Foundation, for example, where they were saying you had to live in the city. Well, that makes no sense when you're trying to, uh, recruit people. Uh, because, uh, you know, there's going to be, in, in a small pond, there's limited fish. In an ocean, there are a lot more fish. So where do you want to go fishing? So that really kind of tells you where you need to do your recruiting. And anyone that, um, would do recruiting if they are a resident of Hammond, well, then that means they can compete at a national level. And that's a good thing. So to put limits on it like that, that they have to live in the city for recruiting, um, I think it's like shooting yourself in the foot. And what, the other thing too is that there's already accountability with an appointed position. If the mayor is appointing that position, you have ready access to the mayor or the administration, uh, if any issues come up. If it goes right to the voters, then you've got to deal with them on a large scale and probably a more ineffective way. So I think if there are issues, you're able to resolve them internally in a much more, um, expeditious, uh, manner. The other thing too is if you go to an elected position, you're now injecting politics, uh, into, uh, that position. Let's just look at what's going on with the sheriff's race in the parish right now. It is getting nasty and there's no reason for that. There, why, if you have an appointed position and you have really much more control, um, and influence with the, uh, with that individual, then you can avoid those altogether. And then all the other politics and, and fundraising and everything that goes along with that, why go down that road? Why make it complicated? And that's all I have to say. And I thank you for, you've got a good situation. Whatever you may think about the current chief, if he's not, um, um, uh, doing his job, then they can find someone else and they can recruit on a national level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I wasn't supposed to say nothing, but I'm gonna say something. So I respect your opinion. All of us up here been elected. You just stood up there and talked about the moratorium. And it takes all of us to vote on it, but on the chief of police or the police situation period, I wish I could feel safe in my neighborhood like you feel safe in your neighborhood. That's why I have an issue with it. And being elected, that's, is what we talking about now, the moratorium? The town hall meeting? You had a town hall meeting, but the ones that should have been here, that was elected by the people, which is the mayor, Robin Miller, those the ones y'all letting off the hook. Why would you want to take something out the parish and put it into the city? So, and I'm saying that to say this here, always look for the elephant in the room. Look for the ones that you voted for. So that's why I would love somebody that if we vote for him, he'll be able to talk to all of us. He don't have to just go to the mayor. We have an issue in the black community. We really do. So it might not affect you, but the people that I represent in District Three, their shooting took place, the bullet went in the mouth, come out the neck. That was in my neighborhood. That was several blocks from my house. And if that take place, it could be in my house next. So, yes, I'm afraid. The community is afraid. You all, and I'm saying you now, you can make a phone call, talk to the mayor. We can't do that in my community. I wish we could. We don't have it in our community. So that's the whole idea this come about. With the booking room video, I don't know if you saw it or not. It was in my neighborhood. See, all these things take place in my neighborhood. Just ride through the neighborhood and see what's going on. And you'll see the things that we're talking about, you know? We're not as fortunate as you. We're not as blessed as you. So we do have an issue when it comes to District Three neighborhood. I'm afraid. Every day, not one day, every day, I'm afraid in my car. And now, since the shooting took place in this young man's house, I'm afraid in my house. You know, cameras, all that. Everything that the police department asked for, they got it. But guess what? This took place in July. We yet to even talk about it or hear anything that the police department have done about the shooting incident. So you know what? I wish I could go in my house and go to sleep and rest, like you can, but I can't. So, yes, I do have a problem. And by me being elected, I don't have a choice but to talk about it because I hear about it every day. What we gonna do? How we gonna do? How we gonna do this? So I cannot rest like you can. So, and I wasn't supposed to do no talking, but when something hit me, I'm gonna talk about it.
Well, I think, uh, Mr. Forbes, I think you had some good points you made at, at the podium just now. But I think the problem where you may, you may, you know, there's accountability issue that we have right now in the police department and then where we're at right now. A few years back, the majority of council asked the mayor to have, you know, to sit in chief, to resign. And, and, and that did not happen. And therefore, we, as long as the mayor is happy with the chief, that's how it goes. Accountable to one person. And so, election, three of the other mayor candidates ran. We're gonna, not, was going to, you know, not support the chief and, and get a new chief. Therefore, same mayor elected. That's the accountability issue right now we have. Yes, it makes sense. It should work the way you said at that podium. So you hit all things on the head when you came up there and said it. But accountability issue right now, the way it lays, it's only up to one person. So as long as you make one person happy, that's it. And so that's kind of the problem we have right now. And there's pros and cons on both, and I agree with you on there. And it's a very, very delicate situation and, and, you know, not all the time, you know, grass is green on other side. So, you know, it's, you know, you gotta watch and, and, you know, electing one or appointing one, they got pros and cons on each one. But, but it's, it's a, it's, it's a big decision to be made. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, five fifty-four P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilman Diveterio?
Here.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilman Wells?
Present.
Councilman Leon?
Present.
Councilman Andrews?
Present. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Ron Matthews to come up and give us our opening prayer, please.
Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for your love and your kindness and your tender mercy. We ask you to be with us on tonight as we conduct the business affairs of this city. Ask you to bless each and every one in attendance. In Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Uh, for our presence of allegiance, all veterans and active military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Final adoption of minutes, approval of minutes from October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Final adoption of an ordinance, old business, number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to extend and modify the moratorium on the acceptance and processing of subdivision plots, site development plans, or zoning amendments for multifamily housing within the city of Hammond for an additional hundred and eighty days.
We've discussed it many a times. Um, I, uh, I'm, you know, I'm, anybody here to say anymore. I think everybody has said enough. Uh, if anybody wants to say anything else, use your time. So, I mean, I, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye. Final adoption of ordinance, old business, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by John Montesino Senior to revoke the right-of-way of Bronner Street, which was never constructed by the city of Hammond, according to a survey by Max Bodine, Inc., dated eight five twenty-three. Lacy?
I don't have anything additional to add.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? If not, pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance, new business, number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request- Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by Gloria Boyd to allow for a mobile home located at seven zero seven Washington Drive in District Four, zoned RS-three, Z-two-zero-two-three, dash-zero-three, dash-zero-zero-one-two-zero, with the following conditions. This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use. It meets all the requirements in the Unified Development Code, Article Three, Section Three, Dash Four. Three, the damaged mobile home currently on the property must be removed before a mobile home permit can be issued.
Anyone else here on this item?
The ladies here tonight, you want to come up to the mic, please? How you doing?
Fine.
Good, good. My name's Sam, nice to meet you. I, I just wanted to, excuse me, is this Ms. Boyd? Is it, are you Ms. Boyd?
Yeah, Gloria Boyd.
Gloria.
Seven oh seven Washington Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one.
Okay. And, and you currently live there right now, or it was damaged and you moved out, or?
No, I'm living there right now.
Okay, you're living there right now? And then you got a new one, and so you have to remove it and then get your new one moved in?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And you plan to stay there and, you know, intend to live there, right?
Right.
Okay, okay. I was just checking, just want to make sure. I appreciate you coming tonight and nice to meet you. And, uh, good luck with, with, you know, your mobile home and getting, getting set up and settled in again.
All right, y'all have a blessed.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Is there anyone else on this item? Pleasure the council, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Ms. Boyd, I pray that everything goes forward with you and be able to move forward with your new home. New business, final adoption of ordinance, number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance proposing an election to determine amendments to the city of Hammond Home Rule Charter, providing for an elected, elected chief of police and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Councilman Wells?
Thank you. Uh, right now, I would like to take this off the agenda right now, have some things that I need to go over.
You making a motion to table it right now?
Yes. Make a motion to table it right now.
Second.
Before you take the vote on this, Ms. Leece, I just want to make one comment. And I do appreciate the fact that Councilman Wells taking it off and making whatever necessary corrections that need to be made. But let's be clear about what we doing here while we moving forward, uh, in this process. And I want to make a comment off of what Mr. Forbes was saying about the sheriff's race. Two things that I've learned in my life that bring the worst out of people, that's the death of a loved one and politics. And it all boils back down to people. And nine times out of ten, it's not even the people that's involved that has the issues, it's the people that's surrounding. But what we going through right now in my profession, I'm educated, I teach civics, and I'm in the process now of teaching my students the power of the vote and being able to use their voice. Whether this pass or fail, and if it gets to the people, at least I've given them the opportunity to speak for themselves, is where I'm standing with this. Allowing the process to go for, to go forward, people be able to use their voice, or not to use their voice at all. With anything that you have, there's always the possibility to, uh, to make changes in what's going on. So, uh, with this, I thank Councilman Wells for taking, wanting to take time to, to go through this process, where we be able to dot all the i's and cross all of the t's that need to be done in this process. So, uh, I appreciate that and I thank, thank you for that. And I just want us to be able to move forward, just like we did with the food trucks. We took our time with it, we got everything together and we put it out there. And this is something that is very important, uh, to the future of our city, whether it passes or fail. But I just want to make sure that the process is done correctly and everything is done in place. Thank you, Councilman Wells.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Introduction of ordinance, none. Resolutions, number one.
A resolution to adopt the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire for Fifth School Year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, and authorize the mayor to sign questionnaire. Lacy Landrum?
This is the annual questionnaire that we do as part of our audit. What we are certifying through this questionnaire is that we have followed state laws according to open meetings such as this, or having minutes of this meeting, how we pass our budget, those kinds of things. So this is the same questionnaire that we fill out every year as part of the audit. The very last page has the contact information of the council members along with the city attorney and the finance director.
Is there anyone from the audience having any questions or concerns on this particular item? Anyone from the council?
Yeah, how much money do we have in the budget?
Approximately fifty million dollars. I can't give you an exact amount. It all depends on how much you spend and how much we bring in.
I know. And no reason I ask that question. I ask that question for the simple fact, what I look like voting on something, and I don't even know how much money we dealing with. And none of the councilmen know whether they say they know or not. We don't know what the budget is. We don't know how much money we dealing with, because guess what? You sit there and throw a stack of papers on this here desk, we don't know what it is, because nobody explaining nothing. That's what I just got through talking about, accountability. If we don't have accountability of what's going on as a city councilman, we gonna really have issues. And so, that's the problem that I have. We don't even know what's in the budget.
I think you're referring to that you do know what's in the budget.
Oh, no.
Because you have a binder of what you passed for the budget that's also linked online. But what you received about a month ago, I think, was the current budget to actual report. And if you would like that presented to you, or if you have questions about that, we're happy to answer that, um, at, at any time. We can have a presentation, we can have a discussion about that.
See, Councilman Wells, I think what it is, is when we first got up here, we had a financial director here at the meetings. And the financial director would probably be able to answer the questions that you'd have. But, I don't know, Lacy, are you the financial director right now, or administrator, are you?
No, I'm the director of administration.
Okay, all right. So who's our financial director?
Laura Hammett.
Okay, all right.
So as we sat through the budget process, if you have questions, or if you ever need assistance with the budget, if you want more information about what's in your specific projects within your district, or if you have questions about the budget to actual report that you received, we're happy to go over that. It's a long report, so I don't know which sections you would like to focus on, but anytime you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Yeah, well, it's, it's amazing though, that we talking about a budget. We talking about money, taxpayers' money. And I think a lot of time, we get thrown off track, and as a city councilman, uh, we don't get the information that we need. And so now, you want me to vote on something that I don't even know nothing about? Because you know what? I don't know the budget. I don't know how much we done spent in my district. I don't know how much we done spent downtown. So, and I know you can't answer the questions now, and that's why I always say, transparent, we have to be transparent. And a lot of times, this not my account. They elected me for a reason. And I know what my job is, and I'm gonna do my job. I'm just sitting there saying, we, I don't know what's in the budget, you know? Uh, I know it was a joke when you said fifty million, but we got fifty million.
That's not a joke. That's actually a, a...
Oh, you for, you for real?
I'm, I'm for real, yeah.
Oh, and so, we not doing no work in Mooney Park, and we got fifty million dollars?
We have done a lot of work in Mooney Park. We have currently a five hundred thousand dollar grant that we're enacting in Mooney Park. That's in addition to the other work that we have done on the playground and on the basketball court and those things that have been completed already.
I think, I think she's answering what, with the budget total, they have fifty million dollars, you probably asking what the balance is, I guess, right now, right?
Yeah.
You like the back, current balance, not, not the actual total budget, I guess. That, that's what, yeah. So it's a difference.
Trying to figure out what y'all can spend?
I guess that, I guess that's what he was asking. I don't think he was asking what the total budget was.
I already see, and it's not, it's not for the councilmen to get into no fight, and it's not for you to, uh, you know, get a little radical mislacing. It's just a question that was asked. And I don't think I asked it in a nasty way. I just asked, what was the budget? That's all I asked. But it's, it ain't even nothing for us to talk about. It was for me. That what was asked of me, and I was just asking the question. That's, that's all. So, I know what to do. I just wish the city councilmen will wake up and sit there and say, the people elected us for a reason, not just to sit up here and okay everything the city asks for. That, that's not my job. I'm gonna do my part, thank you.
So again, this questionnaire actually deals with state laws, and it's been sent to the council. This is the same laws and the same, almost identical questionnaire that we have done annually. It doesn't deal specifically with the budget. What it's asking is, we have adopted a budget for general fund and all special revenue funds according to the state law. You, you did that. You, you published it, you met your deadlines, you did all of that. The chief executive officer or equivalent has prepared the proposed budget that included the budget message, the proposed budget for the general fund and each special revenue. So this goes through in detail all that we do throughout the year, um, with both accounting and with other things as well, when we bring budget amendments to you and talk about those tonight, when you are gonna approve a bid that comes in for a public works project. This talks about all of those things that we're required to do by law, and this is just certifying, yes, we did that, no, we did not do that, or it's not applicable to us as a municipality, because this does also include things for ports or sewage districts, school systems, those kinds of things. And I think it says, but I want just to say it for everyone to maybe wondering what we're voting on. So this is a questionnaire that, that the administration has completed. You're asking the council to allow the mayor to sign it, so it can be sent to the auditors. We'll then check your answers to make sure that we have complied with all the laws and then give us an audit report, which we get every year. That's correct. That's what this is. That's correct.
Anyone else? Pleasure the council?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
No.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
And Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution to ratify and award bids received on eleven-nine, twenty twenty-three for the headworks upgrade, South WWTP Project Number six-one-six, dash-one-two-four-zero-three. Chuck Spangler.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Should've got, uh, hyperlinked bids we took. This is the second bid we've taken this year. This is the first one on sewer. We take another bid on December, on December seventh, and you'll see it on the twelfth for our overall rehab project that was funded by a grant. This is not funded by a grant. We only got two bidders. We had five pickup plans, they all said it was gonna go way over budget, three of them decided not to bid it at all. And it's actually close. We had one point one million dollar budget, and it came in a million one hundred fifty-two thousand, and with our contingencies in that appropriation, we'll be able to handle the moving forward. So the wastewater plant, um, it is a mechanical process. We spent a good bit of money over the last few years. The headworks, there are two headworks. There's a main headworks that's been there since two thousand and five, and there's a new headworks we built when we upgraded Phoenix Square Pump Station, Mooney Pump Station, and what we call the MM Pump Station, and Arnold Pump Station, all going through Councilman Wells' district. Last year, we spent a good bit of money. And when we did that, I built a brand-new headworks to separate that and to allow those pumps to run efficiently when they're overloaded, like during rains. Neither of those two stations have screens, and we're supposed to be removing large solids from the flow stream. So we're, they had a screen that was put there in two thousand and five. There were two of them. The first one probably went out five years ago. We've been working with one, and it's pretty much not working at all now. The new headworks had no screen. We really didn't have the money to put one when we built that headworks a year ago. So this is two screens, one on the new headworks, one on the old headworks, and we'll be able to screen our solids and get more effective treatment. It has very little to do with flow, it all has to do with the type of treatment. We don't want big clods of pampers and, you, you wouldn't believe what comes through our wastewater plant into our plant, wash rags, beach towels, mops, mop heads. So this will screen all those solids out, squeeze them, put them in the dumpster, disinfect them, and take them to the landfill. That's what the purpose of the screen is. And on a rain day, we may have six, eight million gallons coming through that plant. So we'll have two screens, and they'll screen the solids out and help our discharge become more efficient.
This is a curious random question. How big is this screen? It's a pretty big screen, I guess.
It's, um, it's, I would say it's the size of a big double freezer.
Yeah.
Stainless steel, moving parts, it has a rotating screen in it, it's called a center flow screen, has teeth in it to grab the solids, it sucks the solids out, then it rotates in and picks them in a chute, the chute shoots them up through an auger. The auger is a stainless steel, looks like a trumpet, eight feet long, and the auger takes the solids into the, out of the waste stream and squeezes them out of the, squeezes all the water moisture out, drops the moisture back into the headworks, we don't want that on the ground, and then drops the solids, it's just a clump, maybe this big, into the dumpster.
So it's the whole, it's the whole system, it's not just a screener? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Screens are a big ticket.
Yeah, okay, I was there. Man, it's crazy, you only get two, two bidders on a big job like that. You figured out some contracts, I'd want something like that.
Well, they told me, I called the mayor, I told Lacy, the mayor wanted to forget, they said it's gonna be two hundred thousand over budget. We had one point two million. And I told the mayor, it looks like we're gonna run out of money, said we gotta do it, do it, take the bids, and we'll deal with the money. Well, we had one, as you can see, that's under, way under the one point two, well, a little bit under one point two million. And we did have one at one point three, Mark Nettles.
Yeah.
But the rest of them must have been over one point four million, because they just backed away. I know, um, Hemphill and I know Mitchell were going to bid it, and they just didn't never bid it.
Okay.
We never know till the day of the bid who's gonna show up, as you know.
Mr. Chuck?
Yes, sir.
You said y'all build a new one, and this still wasn't a part of it, because it would've been over budget?
We put a new screen when we did all that work up and down Mooney.
Uh-huh.
It's about, it's a concrete tank, it's probably as long as this room, six feet wide, and it runs in through a regular, what we call a, a manual screen. It's a bar screen that catches solids. But it got so many solids in it, Vernon and them were out there raking that thing ten times a day, and they, they couldn't rake it on the weekends, because they're not there. So we had the thing stopping, overflowing into our emergency bypass, and it didn't work. I wanted to do it at the time, but we were spending quite a bit of money already. We spent like three million dollars. And so I put it in the budget, it didn't get passed last year, and we did pass it this year, we, the council passed it this year. And so I put it in the budget, it didn't get passed last year, and we did pass it this year, we, the council passed it this year. It wasn't, it wasn't last year's budget.
You say it wasn't last year's budget?
It wasn't the previous year's budget, but it didn't, got moved to this year, and now we've approved it July one, and I immediately bid it.
Yeah, but it's-
Uh, Mike, I should do a better job explaining, it's not a, I mean, my five engineers and three of them don't understand this either. It's not, it's not that I'm making, I'm not trying to make light of it, but it's a complicated process. I've offered, and I'll offer to you again, anybody wants to make a tour of our wastewater plant and our discharge, I'd be glad to drive you, walk you through what, what's going on, all the different features. We have an effluent pump station, we manufacture our own disinfectant, which is like chlorine, we have a big brine tank. It's a, it's an impressive, uh, process, and it pumps eight miles to Joyce Wildlife Management, where it's pretty clean, you walk down there and see, it doesn't smell, it's clear, and I'd be glad to take any of y'all. I'm driving myself, or I, I wanna ride with you, but I'll drive you myself, so you can get your truck.
You don't wanna ride with me?
Well, you don't get your truck messed up, because it's muddy down there.
Your truck's nicer than my truck, Chuck.
Well, I'm gonna say it again, I would love to take a ride, I would love to take a ride with you, and I said it before, but I quite don't understand. I heard you what you say, how we build something and don't add it to it at the time that we building. That's the part I don't understand.
Well, six-hundred-thousand dollars, we're already spending one million, and the mayor just said that's too much money, we can't bite that out of our sewer program in one year. And we did, we, we've been a year without it.
But I keep, we keep dealing with a sewer issue, and now we sitting here trying to cut money back on a sewer issue. But even right now, uh, uh, these, the, uh, the ladies right there, they having sewer issues now, and I'm here, we, we cut back when this could've been solved right then, because this what I hear. Now, not from you, but what I hear from the city, all the money that we have. And so I can't, it's a conflict with me, when I'm here, we got a lot of money. Then when it's time to do a job, we can't do the job because the money's-
We all love to spend money, so you, if you, if, when we come to the next budget here, and let's concentrate on the sewer appropriations, that's a six-sixteen and four-twenty sales tax. The sewer is a enterprise fund, it's typically generated from sewer user rates, and that's a limited amount of money. Where sales tax keeps going up, our sewer rates are flat, we don't really have a whole lot of money in the sewer fund. So we kinda have to, well, budget it, that's what a budget's all about, we have to spread it out. But I'd be glad to talk to you about it in greater detail when we get our budgets going again, because there's lots of things out there that I agree can be done. And we're about to spend six million on the collection system, which continues to have holes in it. We've all heard about it, we all know about it. Got a grant for four million, and we're putting up two million of our own. It's gonna take bids, we're gonna take bids on December seventh and work on them, if they hope they're in the budget, we'll bring it to you on the twelfth, on the meeting the twelfth.
Well, you know, I can't tell you what the budget is, but thank you so much.
Sir?
I can't tell you what the budget is, but thank you so much, I'm being funny.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm really being sarcastic, you know, I don't know what the budget is, so, but thank you so much.
Well, I can tell you my budget's-
Yeah.
To the, to the dollar, one-point-two million, and we have one bid under budget. I do recommend award to the low bidder, L. King, and the amount of, the base bid, the amount of one-million-one-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Anyone else before we call for this vote? Okay, go ahead, Miss Lacy.
Council, excuse me, Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Thank you, Chuck. All right, council reports, mayor's office.
I'll report.
All right. Anyone from the council?
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, I'd just like to thank the city and parish officials that came to do a presentation at a town hall meeting we had, um, for District Five on drainage and land development across from Woodbridge Subdivision, we had a great turnout. Uh, this was a, just a good example of collaboration. We had people from, we had officials from the parish, we had officials from the city, and we had the people we needed to answer the questions and to make the presentation. Uh, and it, it went well, it, I think it was about ninety minutes, and, uh, at the end, there wasn't, there wasn't any questions, and I think everybody, you know, uh, got what they, got what they needed, got what they needed to know, whether they liked it or not, I don't know, but got what they needed to know. There's a great synopsis of this meeting on the front page of today's Daily Star. Uh, I thank the Daily Star for that, very good jo, very good job. So again, just want to thank everybody who participated in that, and, uh, I look forward to, uh, I look forward to a city planner coming and, and having more collaboration with the, uh, with the parish. Mr. Forbes brought up a good point, you know, we, we have multifamily housing and huge, huge projects around the periphery of the city. You know, we keeping them from outside the city, but they're across the street. So I think more collaboration and more planning probably needs to, probably needs to happen, uh, for the, for the greater good of all. Thanks, appreciate it.
I'll just say, um, happy Thanksgiving, we won't see each other until after Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving, hope everyone enjoys and, uh, spends quality time with family, and is thankful for everything we have.
Sam?
I just want to thank, thank the council for the support on the moratorium, uh, tonight. Um, it's an important, important, uh, we, we made it a step forward in the right way tonight, and, uh, we, we have a lot, uh, this, this really is important for the future of Hammond and, and the way, and the growth, and, um, you know, the division and development of the future of Hammond. So, um, I, it's, it's definitely needed, and, um, I look forward to continue working with the different groups, um, planning and zoning and, and, uh, enhancement committee and, and the city administration to, to make some improvements, um, going forward. So, um, appreciate the, uh, extension, so, thank you.
Councilman Wells?
Yes, I would like to say happy Thanksgiving, be safe, don't eat too much turkey. Thank you.
All right, again, to recap on all of that as well, uh, happy Thanksgiving. Um, everybody should know that every day should be a day of Thanksgiving, we have a lot to be thankful for. Number one, we live in a country where we can freely express ourselves and be able to move around. So therefore, that's one thing that we should be thankful for. We also be thankful for, for your brothers and sisters at the inside of your community. I grew up in a time when the streetlight came on, everybody had to be inside, and we not living in that time anymore. Please continue to play for our children, uh, if they continue to go back and forth to school, continue to pray for everyone that's sitting up here around this table, our law enforcement and our fire department. Again, we have a lot to be thankful for, we're moving in toward the end of the year, where we getting ready to start celebrating Christmas, I'm sorry, but I have to just make this a little comment. Everybody likes a gift, but we must be continuing to remember what the greatest gift that was given to us through our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, that's something we should be thankful for every day, every day, and let us not forget that. But again, everybody enjoy your Thanksgiving, you guys enjoy your Thanksgiving, enjoy your time with your family and your friends, because tomorrow is not promised, and we should live our life with a purpose and a meaning for it. And I'm just glad and thankful to be able to sit around this table with everyone that is here and you all that are out in the audience on today, enjoy the rest of your evening on tonight, and try not to eat too much turkey next Thursday, Sal. Gotta get a motion to adjourn.
Salute. Second.